All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everybody, to the Sunnyside City Council Regular Meeting for today, Monday, March twenty seven, two thousand and twenty-three. For the record, all council members are present, either in person or remotely. And City Manager Alba is remote. All department heads listed on the agenda are present. And so I do want to remind all council members and all speakers tonight. After our last meeting, I got a number of calls to complain that we could not be heard on the YouTube broadcast the next day. If you would please be careful to speak into your microphone so that we can all be heard. There are a surprising number of people who actually go back and listen to us on YouTube. I would find that classically boring, but I do congratulate those who actually go back and do that, but let's make sure that we can be heard as well as possible, okay? All right, and we have somebody here for the invocation. I would ask that you please rise at the invocation, and afterwards, please remain standing for the flag of allegiance.
Lord, I do pray for all these ones that are here tonight for the meeting, and I think you're willing to serve our small little town of Sunnyside in this place. And, Lord, I pray for your blessing upon them. They serve the people that have all the citizens. Inside and help and blessing, especially inside meetings. But I also think about all those who serve our community and other local responders, law enforcement officers, our firefighters, our medicals, blessing on that. For the day of all of us in this town, keep blessing. I do pray as a pastor from this community. Thank you for the mercy and.
Equitally just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. All right, council, if there's no objection, one thing got omitted from the regular agenda, and that is Yakima Valley Tourism. John Cooper, the CEO, would like to share the two thousand and twenty-two annual report. John Cooper and his team take care of all of our tourism marketing, so there's no objection. Would, and Ms. Cooper, you may come forward and give your report, please. You can hand it to one of the staff, they can share that with us.
First caller of the stack just began the report. The new travel guide. Everyone, I'm John Cooper.
I apologize, I cannot hear Mr. Cooper at all.
Neither can I. Is this microphone on? Okay, there's a green light. It is on, I think you may need to project your voice a little bit more.
Hi, it's John Sunny Side. This is the John Cooper Show. Hello, everybody again, I'm John Cooper with Yakima Valley Tourism, and I'm indeed very honored and pleased to be here today to present our annual report and our new travel guide. So let's start with the annual report. And you'll notice there's an additional thing to the annual report, and that's going to be where I do most of my discussion and presentation. While the annual report is full of data and statistics about how twenty twenty-two went, I'm going to spend most of my time tonight talking about what we do this year in sunny side. As we all know, the travel and tourism industry is one of the most devastated industries because of the COVID pandemic, and so decreased our visitations and activities all across the world. One of the things, though, that I'm very pleased in that is that we're recovering, and twenty twenty-two, and the final information is that we should be back to or be ahead of twenty nineteen data as far as visitations and such. What we have in the annual report shows, though, that visitors in the most recent year of data we have, which is twenty twenty-one, spend about two point three million trips to the whole Yakima Valley. They spend possibly three hundred and forty-two million dollars, and their spending supports or generates over forty-six hundred jobs. And that's in a number of sectors, including your usual ones that you associate with jobs, like the campgrounds, or hotels, restaurants, and the like, but also support industries. That's important. And that generates in turn over forty-eight million dollars in local estate taxes just in Yakima Valley alone. But as I said before, we see it being a year of recovery, and we anticipate that in the year of twenty twenty-two data, and probably in a month or so, we'll definitely be ahead for the twenty nineteen. Particularly focused on the concerts I included in this package, and this is specifically the program of work that we have in the way with sunny side in twenty twenty-three. And the travel guide before you on page sixty-four to sixty-five, most of the year, a couple of two-page spreads, we help the city to do some stuff, a lot of presenting for sunny side. Plus, you have various listening events and big celebrations in our guide that's been placed by our council. We produce over a hundred thousand of these each year, and distribute those throughout Northwest and beyond. You'll find them in hotels, attractions, various key points of entry throughout the Northwest, all the way to Boise and San Antonio, and more. And that out, and distributed at a number of activities. I don't have a lot of quantity, we're pretty much ran out, but I do have a small quantity of the sunny side guide that we produce pretty soon. There's about forty thousand of these, three seventy, on a local level, but on a regional basis. And we're in the process of updating and printing this, so I have five of these that we can pass around. And further, if you're happy, we'll shoot them in the air, we'll supply them in the marketing and we have them in the way for print in visual format. The smaller entities that are come talk on travel, they actually have a cast. We just reduce the size so we can say like paper, but it's pretty bold, it's good size, and they're placed within the publication by Southwest Travel. And this man here, doing a number of digital advertisements, is a very effective use to exposure for destination. And so we are currently undertaking a number of promotions for events like Google Mile, Lighted Farming, and the Today. And that gives use of exposure in the various channels and sites we happen. We have two campaigns running, both then targeted at the distance to less outside fifty-mile radius of the bigger Yakima Valley area. And so far, through those two, we see over three hundred and seventeen thousand impressions in less than three weeks, generating about eleven hundred and twenty-five hundred miles. The site that we put, we can call, come to the sunny dot com. They copy your site, they express site, and they content visuals. And that counts for about two percent of views so far from the Google Mile landing page on that site, so it's working, and people are going there. And we don't have a ease, whether it comes down to nearly people, both the Google Miles and four hundred sparkle, and they go off to about fifteen thousand subscribers. The subscribers will opt in. In addition to the print and tape media that we do, they also work for travel and lifestyle media to place stories about valleys and communities that are there. In the first quarter, we had two successes on the half of the greater sunny side area. We worked with a writer who's been a chief of wine industry, and what the future trends are in the wine industry, publication called seventy thirty, a not physical, but it's a visual outfit. And we were getting a number of wineries that can speak directly to winery folks, how it happened, and how the changes in the wine and grape roll industry are affecting their businesses. We took them to Codeine, Code Bonneville, and then we launched Johnny's Chicken and Churros. We also secured an article about a theater and taco trail that we're developing in an online location, an online site called Home in Your State, which has close to eight million deep business. And it was a multi-page article that you skip copy, and it just only included the art of a page that specifically focused on the great sunny side area, and that came out. Now, last year, our sports commission helped secure many, many events. In May, there's a time of year that I see a lot of youth sporting events in Washington and just like the activities associated, and up to the Memorial Day. We're successful to get the May twenty twenty-three Class One, A, and Two, B, and one G, Boys and Girls, the track and field championship in Yakima during that Memorial Day, or even right before the Memorial Day weekend. So the net effect of that is while the event's occurring in Yakima, there's also golf, there's also a softball pitch, softball, a number of other sporting events. And combine all those events, and kind of be at a point where they will be past a lot of the people coming to us, to the valley's program, for all those events just in the area. So you'll see some of your hotels, folks from that. So kind of just a brief update of our programs and activity.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. The opportunity to spend some of our LTAC money in the intent of gaining even more LTAC money, so that, and I have stopped at various places around the state, and I always check to see if our sunny side, or if the Yakima Valley book is there, and it is, yeah. So I've not failed to see it where you told me that it would be, so I appreciate the work that you guys are doing.
And if you're going any of the non, I guess Wednesday and Thursday, I think in my office, I'm not a town, deliver the travel guide. Please keep an eye on.
Thank you, sir. As a former Chair of the LTAC Committee, and I know Ms. Hart is Chair of the LTAC Committee, we both appreciate just how important it is to get the information out about our community, to bring in tourism, and tourism generates an awful lot of income for key members of our community, but also brings in tax money that helps fund activities such as our St. Cote de Mayo, and Sunshine Days, and Lighted Farming from the Parade, and those types of things. So that's valuable, it's valuable resource for us. Next item of business, public comments. Citizens are advised, if they must, please limit your remarks in the council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and/or research for presentation at a future council meeting, and we may not directly respond to your comments at this point. So there are no names on the list? There are no names on the list. Is anybody in here wish to take advantage of the opportunity? Seeing none, let's move on. Consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following: minutes. Approve the minutes of the December twelve, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the January nine, twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the January twenty-three, twenty, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, that was hard to say. Payroll vouchers. Approve payroll vouchers, numbers one one nine, two five seven, through one one nine, two six four, and wire transfers as listed for four hundred sixty-one thousand, nine hundred one dollars and ninety-one cents for the period ending February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, and March ten, two thousand and twenty-three. Claim vouchers. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero five, nine two eight, through one zero six, zero one two, and wire transfers as listed for one million. Okay, I'm having a Ms. Hart moment here. One million thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-nine cents for the period ending on March fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero six, zero one three, through one zero six, zero six three, and wire transfers as listed for one hundred twenty-three thousand, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents for the period ending on March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Council members, is there any item that you would like to remove for further discussion? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item? All right, motion by Council Hicks, second by Council Ripley, to approve the consent agenda, thank you. Debate on this item. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. A two vote aye, motion passes. Active agenda. First item, repeal FMC three dot one two. Consider adopting an ordinance repealing chapter three dot one two of the Sunnyside Municipal Code, sale of surplus city property. I'm going to ask the City Manager if she could comment on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Basically, this was at the recommendation of our city attorney. We have a cumbersome process in disposing of surplus property, and along with a lot of other cities, we are going to take this out of the code and then just follow the RCW for disposing of property. So we just would like to know if you are allowing us to remove this from the SMC.
And council members, if you recall, this was one of the items discussed in our executive session at our last meeting. So any questions on this item? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay. All right, motion by Deputy Mayor Rissucci, second by Council Beeler, to repeal the, let me get this right here, repealing chapter three dot one two of the Sunny Side Municipal Code, sale of surplus city property. Debate on this item. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 And a two vote aye, motion carries. Next item, directly related this, declaring the Monson Property Surplus. Consider approving a resolution declaring the Monson Property, or the West Sunnyside Business Park, as it was once known, surplus. And Madam City Manager, do you have comments for this item?
This is just basically brought from the last meeting, same information just brought forward. Now, we won't be actually doing the sale with this, all we're doing is declaring it surplus.
That is correct. The council member, you remember, we did discuss this on our last meeting. Are there questions or comments on this item?
Let the bidding begin.
All right, what is the desire of council on this item?
Second.
All right, motion by Council Hicks, second by Councilor Hart, to consider, to actually approve the resolution declaring the Monson Property surplus. Is there debate on this item?
This is one, clear, Mr. Mayor. Property is now open for sale for anybody that wishes to bid on it, is that correct?
That's correct. We have now declared the property, or we are in the act of declaring the property surplus, so the city of Sunnyside is not going to plan on using it for its own purposes, it is now to be sold. Okay, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A two vote, I'm sorry, all opposed, no. Two vote aye, motion passes. Item C, Catholic Charities Inspection Task Order. Consider authorizing the City Manager to execute task order two zero two three dash zero four with HLA Engineering and Land Survey to provide construction, observation, and inspection for the Catholic Charities project in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this over to Public Works Director Fisher for presentation.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, Mayor, members of council. This task order is to provide additional inspection services. Of what we found, what Brana found when they found this serious groundwater. So they had to demow off the job, they mowed back in, kind of explain that a little bit on the, on the job work. What they found was significant groundwater, what we call yellow pudding. They really can't excavate in it, they have really good excavators, operators, and so what we did is we went back, basically, initiated with granite construction, used the common material method with plus fifteen percent. They treated that, they mowed back in. What we want to do with this task order is provide inspection services. Because of the groundwater, because of significant challenges with that, that type of base, we're going to about sixty thousand dollars, not to exceed, for them to come in and assist the sewer in.
Council members, any questions for Mr. Fisher? I have one, this is just for the sewer process, right?
Correct.
So is this, I mean, they're planning on building over there too, aren't they?
Yes.
Is this going to impact foundations and those sorts of things?
No, it's, we're talking for ten feet deeper. So the original, the original sewer infrastructure was, was. When we decided to decommission some other lift stations, it dropped that sewer lower due to gravity being into that, to repot the four lift stations, that put us down in the end of that grade.
Okay.
And so that's, that's the reason for, that was a part of the issue. And once we looked through the concrete, it found out.
Okay, good enough. I was just kind of concerned that that might impact future building on that side as well, but if it's, if ten feet down is sufficient to keep those houses stable, if we're having all sorts of issues, then, then I can be satisfied with that. But if we're going to be risking people's homes, we're going to have to look at it a little more deeper, we're going to have to drain it a ton of hours, I mean, so.
I know this development is several phases. This for all, all the phases?
Yes.
Is it just the first phase?
All the phases. Right now, we're just trying to get sewer. Sewers, the deepest, that's the first infrastructure to go in, that's backfilling of the waters or in the street. We already started some homes, those are outside of that, that prison structure, so they, they actually started about. So, so they're going to chomp and get those stoves, those are already spoken for, those are actually, we are, we are.
Any further questions? Hearing none, what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Motion by Council Beeler, second by Council Ripley, to authorize the City Manager to execute task order two zero two three dash zero four with HLA Engineering and Land Survey to provide construction, observation, and inspection for Catholic Charities project in the amount of sixty thousand dollars. Debate on this item. All right, then, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I also vote aye, motion carries. Item D, Franklin Court Task Order Amendment. Consider authorizing the City Manager to execute task order amendment two zero two one dash zero five with HLA Engineering and Land Survey to conduct additional inspection and construction services in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Madam City Manager.
And this is also another Shane Fisher item, so if Mr. Fisher could speak into the microphone a little more clear, we are still having trouble hearing you.
Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Not much better.
It can feel like you're swollen, really.
Right, right. Okay, so this next task order is for the same thing on a different project. It's Franklin Court, it's a little bit of housekeeping. HLA has already been out there, inspections on that, some delays, contractor already started out there, Ross Sanchez, I think Deputy Director's office, doesn't have time to be out there every minute of the day. So HLA has been out there doing inspections, this is the housekeeping task order of state.
Okay, people in the back are saying that they can't hear you very well. Madam City Manager, are you able to hear him at all?
No, it's like his microphone is not projecting, I can hear you just fine. I don't know if it's maybe the distance from the other microphones, I'm not sure, but I notice everyone that is not at the podium, we can't hear, and everyone that is at the podium is just fine.
Yeah, sometimes you have to project your voice a little bit, and sometimes you have to get really close to that microphone in order to be heard, so.
I'm going to double up your mic.
Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Fisher?
Do you have a timeline for when it's, the project will be done?
I hear in the next two weeks, about ten days will be, will be done. City water meters right now.
My question is, when do they expect you, the, fix the, person to take our street to play?
Next week. And he has ball fans opening.
Further questions? Kind of expected Ms. Hart to have questions, because it directly impacts her day-to-day life. And the minivan's not four by four, is it?
It's, it's a project that's been fun to watch, and to see how, just understand how it goes, it's very, very educational for Sunnyside user. Thank you.
No further questions? If I have just a comment on the importance of these types of projects, to continue to improve the city, to modernize and update our water systems, our sewer systems, we need to stay ahead of that. It's not going to become less of a problem, it's not going to become less of an issue in the future, as more and more laws are passed in order to control those sorts of things, we need to be on top of that here in the city. And it's not going to get cheaper. Costs continue to rise, and so these are important projects, and I know it's a huge project, and people live along those streets, but, you know, it's a small area, and we just have to continue improving and looking towards the future. So I'm grateful for you guys are getting out there and doing it, and getting that done. Fortunately, I don't have to drive down that street every day, but I know for those who do, it can be a bit of a challenge. I think it'd be suit, set for a sixth street, man. All right, if there's no more questions and comments, then what is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Motion by Council Hart, second by Council Ripley, to authorize the City Manager to execute task order amendment two zero two one dash zero five with HLA Engineering and Land Survey to conduct additional inspection and construction services in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Debate on this item. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. A two vote aye, motion passes, thank you. Item E, Jail Policy Manual. Consider authorizing the City Manager to execute an agreement with Lexi Paul to get a policy established in the Sunnyside Jail. Madam City Manager.
And I will turn this one over to Commander Kurt Berry.
Commander.
Okay, Chief. Mayor and Councilor, so as we've gone through the police department and tried to update some things, we found that the Sunnyside City Jail has had zero policy, they've been operating. So they've been operating under strict, it's been rendered off, and posted on the wall. So, the city attorney Brad is on here. So what we want to do is, the police department operates under a nice policy, excuse me, which is a policy manual that's set forth with three different ways, technically for, one, you can have pre-reign in an area where you're going to dictate how the department operates on certain topic. There's one area where it's best practice, this is the best practice across the nation. The other one is state law, and the last one is federal law. And every one of those. And every one of those policies is uh, earmarked at the top, what dictates that specific policy. So you'll know if it's federal law, you should know where to change that policy, however you could, I guess. But it's not, obviously not recommended to, uh, state law, best practice, or, uh, area where you have to re-reign with the department. So, right now, we're going through the police department manual, which hasn't been updated in about ten years. And we're now, uh, asking that we contract with Lexapro for a jail policy. So the initial cost is $37,252.35. And then there'll be an annual maintenance fee of $9,295.75. The increased cost upfront is the onboarding, which happens in five phases. That's what we're going through with the police department right now. Basically, you go line by line through the entire policy manual, the police department policy, seven hundred and some pages. I'm not sure what the jail one is, I've never looked at one. So, taking with the city manager, um, due to the cost on this and the need for it, um, it was decided that we bring it to council. Any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions for the chief?
For ten years on the police policy, the jails never had a
Have you found this?
Different questions, do many people over to you, um, contracts, do many companies find these?
We'll have to land it, but
That you're included, yeah, also for your subscription.
Yes, the annual subscription will come out of the police budget. But that's the same cost for the police Lexapro, so we'll be looking at just under $20,000. They want everything like that. Lexapro has a law changes, so say the pursuit law changed tomorrow, they'll push out an update from Lexapro to all Lexapro users in the state of Washington telling them that there's been an update, they accept the change, and then that will get put out to the department. So they're constantly watching for law updates, best practice changes, federal law updates, and pushing them to the department. So, uh, they really are watching that for you. Their company was started by an attorney who was an ex, uh, California Heavy Control Trooper. And they're, they're watching the laws for you to make sure that your manual is up to date.
So keeping up to date, is that what the $9,200 is, is doing?
Yes.
Okay. That just makes sure that we don't have to update it every five years it continues to be.
It will continue to be updated, and as our situation changes, we keep going and updating things. Basically, we have this, um, a couple chiefs ago, and then in 2014, um, our policy manual was printed off, and the subscription was canceled. So since 2014, it says not that our police department policy is not up to you. Like I said, the jail has never had.
That a little shocking. Mr. Bader, were you going to add to this question?
We have the hardware.
It's all online, on their service. So you can actually have an app on your department sheet cell phone and bring up your policy in the field. So if you had a question, how am I supposed to handle this situation, a sergeant or patrol officer, they bring their phone up and search by keyword, um, pursuit, and they will bring up all sections, pursuits and pursuit. Yes.
But I have to confess, I'm a little shocked that the jail has never had a policy manual. That would just be standard operating procedure in my mind, and I always assumed that you had one, so, uh, let's get this corrected post haste. I think that there's potential for issues to come up, and we don't want to get caught in any of that. Further questions or comments from council? What is the Desire Council on this item?
Second.
All right, motion by Councilor Beeler, second by Councilor Hart to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Lexapro to get a policy established in the Sunnyside Jail. Debate on this item.
SAP or maybe that was the like an echo, but I think we all have those, that very thought.
All right, there's no other debate on the item. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? If you vote aye, motion passes. Item F, Robinson Annexation Parcel Number 221035-21443. Consider approving a resolution to beginning the annexation of the Robinson property parcel number just read. Madam City Manager. I'll call.
Sorry, I'm here. Um, and this item I will pass over to, uh, Mr. Martin.
Mr. Martin.
Good evening, City Council. So what I have before you is a, oh, sorry. So I have before you a, a resolution to initiate the annexation. I'm sorry, I'm going to correct, there's actually one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels, and it's in the summary. Seven parcels that were submitted by Clyde Robinson, and these parcels are right off of Alexander Road and called Clyde Circle, but it's next to maybe someday hospital site. We'll see. That one. So, uh, he's, he's interested in moving his property into the city, and hoping that I would bring his application.
All right, councilmembers, questions or comments for Mr. Martin?
Mr. Robinson's property out here is seriously housing residential.
Yep, so that's what you'd be, you'd be looking to do some, uh, low density, single family homes. Kind of a weird area, utilities through there are developed, so we're, we have a thought process on what we're going to do. All work, um, but, yeah, it's going to be a residential home.
Any questions or comments?
We'll come in.
So in my estimation, it's an area that is going to eventually be absorbed into the city anyway. We will eventually have to extend utilities to that area, so it's, I mean, we start now, we start later. It's, and we had originally intended with the hospital development to get the sewer water out there anyway, actually.
The plan, and I think we're still in talks of actually by Alexander Road, uh, we'll
Any further questions or comments? What is the Desire Council on this item? All right, we got a motion by Councilor Hicks, second by Councilor Ripley to approve a resolution beginning the annexation of the Robinson property, seven parcels, um, and I'll just read the 1, 2, 2, 1, 0, 3, 5, dash, 2, 1, 4, 4, 3. Debate on this item? Hearing none? All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no? Also vote aye, motion passes. Item G, amending Title 17 of the Sunnyside Municipal Code. Consider adopting an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Sunnyside Municipal Code. Madam City Manager.
And again, this is a Mr. Martin one.
Mr. Martin.
Um, so what I have before you is the, um, an ordinance asking to amend Title 17. And it's, it's kind of an interesting one, I think I prefaced it a little bit last, last December, maybe early January. Um, so the planning commission, we had some, we had some discussion from community members about keeping chickens. And we didn't really have any ordinances or policies in regards to keeping. And, um, there was some interest from planning commission members because of the cock, eggs, so on and so forth, so we discussed it. And we put together a series of, of policies for us for, for keeping. So, they have to be maintained to, no, tens only, no more than three. They have to be kept in good condition, backyard, kind of fenced in. Um, they basically actually want this. Um, no, and, and no roosters. So, that, that's kind of it for, for the chickens, and then there's some, some housekeeping on cargo containers. They're kind of becoming a bit of a hot topic right now. Uh, we just don't have any policies on it, so I, I, at the same time, I took some cargo containing policies. Um, again, requiring building permits, uh, being specific to the zoning designation, so allowing them in commercial dwelling districts, and restricting their access to residential dwelling districts.
Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Martin? Mr. Bader.
I see a lot of people right Yeah, yeah, that's, that's part of it. So with residential construction, we, it's written there, we would permit it for residential construction for the time of, the time of the construction happening. Addition to the house or
Yes. You can speak into your microphone, sir.
Chickens, you try to allow chickens like downtown Sunnyside? Um, so this would be chickens in, in residential, residential property. So if you have a, a house they have like dogs, they can't keep the dogs controlled. You're that shit. Turn across of the yard, dogs can, cats can attack them. There's no registration.
Is there a requirement to keep them in a chicken coop or a pen?
Yeah. So, and we fill in, so this is, this is the, the problem that we ran into with, with, um, animal control and the police department a little bit, it doesn't, not really anything so there's no, nothing we can say to them besides um, so it's not, it's not, um, establishing some guidelines and policies. At least, if there, people are letting the chickens out, put them back in their yard, or then
Mr. Hicks.
So this is going to, it would be no fawn animals
No, this
Or, or statutes states that we can have no fawn animals?
Has, um, no fowl. Um, here the problem is that there are lots of fowl on the state, there are lots of chickens.
Yeah. Going on, true, yeah, oozers up on
And, and so we can't, we, as code enforcement, we can't go into somebody's backyard and tell them not to have chickens. Have some sort of outrageous probable cause to actually kind of a catch 22 situation, uh, wondering
Well, I was on council when we voted to prohibit them. And I think the reasons that we've prohibited are still valid. I know that it is extremely popular right now to have a few chickens. In fact, I was working in a very nice, beautifully well-established neighborhood this very morning. A beautiful 1920s home that had been immaculately restored and perfectly maintained over the years. And as I stepped out the back door, they had a chicken coop with chickens in this absolutely beautiful high-end neighborhood in Yakima. Um, so I know it's kind of a thing, but we have a kind of a habit in Sunnyside of letting things get out of hand. I mean, the dog, oh man, has, is very valid. I mean, how many stray dogs, I mean, you want to know, just look at what's up Sunnyside, or Sunnyside Lost and Found Pets or whatever, there's dogs all over the place. And if we can't keep control of our dogs, uh, as Mr. Hicks mentioned, how are we going to keep the chickens under control? They're a lot more difficult to catch. I don't know if you've ever run around trying to catch a chicken, but it's not the easiest task in the world.
To chase the chickens.
So, is, is that becomes an, an animal control thing? So we have to work with animal control to
And we can't get animal control to catch the dogs, I guess. Okay, so I see a potential problem here.
Can't get animal
Mr., sir, sir, you're not, not coming.
The heck of it, is there such a thing as service chickens?
Oh, I don't, I don't know about that. I will, I will
They will be
Is there a way for us to maybe, uh, turn the, uh, chicken portions of the particular and just be more conservative cargo containers? Can we
Yeah, we can, we can So the, the only reason I bring this up is because, um, and it's fine, um, we can go through it, but, um, when, when we do any sort of enforcement is that, then it, it falls as a, you know, penalty, so then it goes through the enforcement force, and that's, that's the only reason I brought it forward, but, um, yeah, we can absolutely
This is a follow-up to the, to the question, and if you, if you do have the, uh, set limits on does that mean that it would be on, so you're going to have your chickens on?
It would be, it would, so this would then add something to the zoning code, which, uh, the currently the no fowl and then bring the chicken code into the zoning ordinance, which then becomes so we should take, take the
I know there's some problems. Right, your hands are tied. See something on the book.
I think, Mr. Bider makes a lot of sense, I just think it needs a little bit more work to, to that weekend at least, that council, understand what the penalties are, how it's going to be enforced, and if it's going to be consistently enforced, yeah. I, I just have this vision of chickens running around the city barrel and, you know, getting in people's yards and I'm sorry, people aren't going to want to step in that. I mean, it's not, it's bad enough of the dogs in my front yard where I clean it up, other than my neighbor's dogs all the time because they can't bother to tie them up, and we don't have animal control that's, that's here enough to, to do the job. And so, I'm a little concerned about this right now. I'm not ready to vote in favor of this one. If we had voted on it tonight, I would vote against it, uh, very strongly. But, uh, yeah, we do want to take that and, and do a little bit more work on that and re, reintroduce it a little bit later. I think Ms. Hart's, um, position can be taken if somebody wants to make a motion to to move ahead with the shipping container portion of it, um, we can do that, but I don't know how the rest of council will be this far.
Along the same lines, uh, will animal control, or will the police officer have to see the chicken out running around before, before you do anything about it?
Right, so we would need to receive some sort of complaints, uh, again, it's the, it's a probable cause to get into the property if a chicken is out, and we can identify who that chicken belongs to, but yeah, then it's up to either out of control or the police to kind of identify where that animal belongs and see where
So it's like help people keep their knowing that, that you can go in there and
Well, then it falls under, again, if we move it to, so, I, 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 I know the other points of this, but, um, if we do it, we add something to the zoning ordinance that then becomes enforceable through civil action, which is very good action, we can and we can actually set code force that it
Which right now, my neighborhood has chickens maybe chickens, and, and so if that would help keep them contained back there, I don't mind chickens, I'm not animal
I just want to know what you're hiding, right? But I would like to, to make a motion to and continue cargo container, I wish, seeing updated.
So I will, I will call that section C of the proposed ordinance that would.
It does. So section C is the chicken ordinance. Okay.
We, you know, we, we start a lot in chickens, yeah. We're gonna let goats and we're, we're gonna let whatever else in it. Uh, I, somewhere the line has to be drawn and we're not going, not going to allow it. Uh, there's lots of goats in this town. Uh, not as many goats as chickens, but there's plenty of goats in this town, but, uh, I, kinda like the mayor in some respect. We, we need to add something so we can draw the line and say yay or nay. Uh, you know, rabbits, who's gonna say rabbits don't fall under the. Yeah, but a little bit of kids like to raise rabbits, you know? Um, what, what are we gonna do here? Uh, I, I think we're opening up a can of worms. We're not, we're not ready to enforce, or we're not ready to, uh, come down on.
I, I think that's the purpose of pulling that section out.
Yeah.
Mayor Burisma, if I may?
Yes. It's all the.
Um, it, it makes it really difficult for code publishing and for the citizens to understand when we bring in ordinance forward and then we strike a portion of it. I would recommend we just take this entire item and then we unwrap it and bring it back to you in two separate items.
Is, is council okay with that?
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna.
Without a second? Mr. Sutti?
I was gonna recommend the same thing, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, it's difficult for us here on the call, um, and I imagine on YouTube as well, to understand the sausage-making process here of while you're tearing apart the ordinance. Um, I agree with you, sir, um, when it comes to, and Mr. Farmer, when it comes to the slippery slope, um, and I have real concerns about allowing any kind of livestock into the city. So, um, I, I would like to see us re-break this up again and go over it in detail.
Thank you, sir. All right, and so council has said there's no objection to that. We will then, instead of voting on part of it, we will allow the city manager and staff to do some work on that and bring it back in, in its individual parts. But I definitely think that the chicken side of it needs some work, so we need to understand it, yeah. And we have, we have valid citizen concerns about the loose animal already. And so we need to work on how are we gonna improve that situation as well, because it is, it has gotten out of hand, and so I think that we need to do some serious work there as well. So it's all part of the same package in my mind. Whether that works for everybody else, I don't know, but animals need to be controlled in one way or another. So, all right. That brings us to item, four items from council members. Mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. So I had a lot to think about this weekend. We have an opening on our planning commission and we have three applicants left from our last pool. Um, council, are you okay with me, me making an appointment with the planning commission from the previous pool of applicants? Or would you like to, to advertise for the open decision?
Well, I think we should check if people who are in your previous, uh, pool are still wanting to serve.
I have done that, and every one of them is enthusiastic about the possibility of serving.
How long ago was that?
I believe so, yes. Just less than a year, but it is less than a year. Okay, yeah, and like I said, everybody I called was enthusiastic about serving, which did not make the selection process any easier. Each of these individuals I know, um, in other areas as well, and I had the opportunity to talk with each of them, and like I said, yeah, they were all pretty pumped about the possibility. So I had to let them know that only one was gonna get chosen. And so, um, you know, one of the things as the mayor I'm learning, and Ms. Hart and Mr. Farmer, you understand this all too well, that you've gotta kinda take a long view on how you make these kinds of selections and, uh, you get what the goal of each of these participants is. And even that didn't narrow it down too much for me. In the end, I finally came to the conclusion, I have, uh, decided that Mr. Dennis Blumer is going to be the, uh, the one that is chosen if it's okay with council. Um, he has experience with the fire department, he knows city issues inside and out, and, um, enthusiastically supports the community. And so, um, he is the one that I've decided to nominate. Write that down. Here, there we go. And then we have a open position on the Parks and Rec Committee for the student advisor. And we had a very fascinating young man apply for the job. Uh, we had a great conversation, and his name is Braden Rice. And with council's approval, I would like to put him in that position. Very well, Mr. Rice is our student representative. He's an 11th grader at Sunnyside High School, and has quite an interesting resume, so I think he has a future, whether in Sunnyside or elsewhere. All right, thank you for that, council. And there is a possibility of another opening on the planning commission, and I think we could probably continue with the current list, unless council, I still have two, two applicants, both of whom, like I said, would love to serve, so. For the sake of the city, there's no wrong choices here. I think somebody, people are disappointed when they don't get picked, but for the sake of the city, they're all really good applicants. Council requests status reports. We got anything to report, Madam City Manager?
Um, actually, there is nothing to report. Um, as spring comes, you will start to see movement on some of these items. Um, but really, for right now, it's all just the status quo.
All right, thank you. Council members, if there's anything you would like to add to the council request status report, please see either myself or the city manager upon her return, and we can get those things added, unless there's something that you have in mind right now that you'd like to share about. All right, moving on. Other reports, announcements, and/or questions by councilor. We're gonna start on the far end of the table over here, Mr. Beeler.
Hi.
Nothing from Mr. Beeler. Mr. Hicks?
Uh, April 22nd, Chilling China Car Show will be going down. Uh, folks, if you get to pull up, it becomes the senior class party.
All right, Chilling China Car Show, I have enjoyed it every time I've been there. Um, you got some nice cars out there, so people put a lot of time and effort into restoring these vehicles and modifying these vehicles, and it's definitely worth coming down and seeing, it gives you ideas for what you might wanna do with the old family Mini Dan. And, uh, it's just, there's just some cool stuff out there. And Ms. Ripley? Ms. Ripley, Ms. Hart?
This is happening in our streets to be cleaned up.
Well, that could mean an awful lot, Ms. Hart, street getting cleaned up, that it's been looking nicer or cleaned up, all the vagrants are taken care of.
Well, we're already taking care of it, though. Right now, uh, right now, we're just really, you know, excited to have our streets back, you know, secure, road closure, and better water pressure. We're excited about. More water.
More water available.
More water available. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, if there's a fire now, they can look up the trucks for the hydrants and not grade it back today.
That is really one of the biggest things that I noticed, too, is the increase number of fire hydrants. And I would, um, that has to be good for insurance, um, for our.
No, I'd love to see improvements.
Not too bad, well.
Ms. Farmer?
I, I do complaints weekly, born on 11th Thursday. Uh, I, I know there's a whole bunch of things going on there, and, and, and I know there's a, a widow or a, a death in the family, so, so things are going, things are going to take some time, and, and, and I don't wanna push anything, but it's become a garbage dump. I mean, if, 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 if there was just some dirt wood there, that'd be different, but it's a garbage dump. And so, uh, if, if, if they're not gonna clean it up, you better have somebody to come in and pick up the garbage.
Thank you, sir, I think I've heard about that one myself.
It was a, a, a residential fire, wasn't it?
That's correct.
And so the, most of it's been cleaned up, but there is still quite a bit of garbage.
Garbage.
We're, we're not trying to try to keep it there.
Yeah, I think people are finding it, it's a pretty.
Well, I think it's one of those situations where they see a little bit of it, and I think it's pretty soon that people begin to believe it's okay.
Yeah.
And, uh, we don't want any loss like that in Sunnyside, so we need to see what we can do about that. Okay, Deputy Mayor Sutschi?
Uh, no report tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right, and I have nothing really to report either. Upcoming council meeting is item D, Madam City Manager.
So it was occurring to me as I sit here, we don't have anything slated for the April 3rd workshop, maybe that would be a good time to unpack the chicken and cargo ordinance.
Okay. Seeing nobody shaking their head violently, no against that one, so we're going to assume that that's okay for council, that we can talk about it there.
Okay, so we'll add that, and then, um, we have storm, stormwater ordinance amendment, uh, franchise amendment, uh, budget amendment number one, and then an LTAC 2023 funding recommendation.
Okay. And do we have anything for April 10?
Sorry, I, the, I did read the April 10 stuff.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
All right, thank you for, for that. Any council member have an item that needs to be added to the agenda? Please speak with me or the city manager, um, as soon as possible, and we'll get the, we'll get those items added to the agenda in the future. Okay, item five, items from department heads, and city manager.
And obviously, you all know that I am sitting in Alaska, um, and spent the entire day traveling, so I would like to know if I could be excused for the rest of the meeting and report back to you all the cool stuff I've learned on my Friday Weekly Brief.
Counsel, is there any objection to the city manager being excused for the rest of tonight's meeting? There is no objection, Madam City Manager. Please go and enjoy your meeting and have a relaxing evening, and we wish you the best on your, on your time away and all that you're doing there.
Thank you very much, and I will let my department head start, um, on one side and go through, and don't forget Jackie. Thanks, guys.
Very well. All right, you have a great night. All right, Ms. Renteria, we're gonna start with you so that we don't forget you.
I think, um, LTAC meant last week, and, um, we're bringing the free allocating the budget tax funds on the secret lives of A and A promotions back to us, so that we can send that money as entertainment and.
All right, Ms. Horner?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report, Mr. Reddick? Nothing, Mr. Martin?
Excuse me for you here. Um, so I just took a brief update on a lot of the inheritance. Um, code enforcement has been working with the property owners on that site. Uh, they have contracted somebody to help them clean it up. It should be cleaned up pretty soon here. Um, kind of, literally for the family members, they're kind of figuring, but how they. Um, but the good thing is that, um, I think that, cleaned up, I think that lot will go good. So that's, uh, that's after that one. Um, but again, also code enforcement, we're also moving to a new software, and it should be up by the end of May. Uh, we're going to be moving to Open Gov, which is a permitting software system. So with that system, we'll be able to have a couple of typical functions where we'll be able to, uh, anybody who sees anything like out, out in the field can. Something in their car, say if they're sitting in a parking lot and they see something, they go to our, uh, website, that'll be available for. Go portion of it. Oh, and, uh, fill out where they're at, take a picture of the code enforcement case and send it to code enforcement officers, and it'll tag the case open. Person that can see that and follow up and comment. They'll be able to track this actual. Doing these really helpful and hopefully helpful for the department.
Please make it really easy to find.
Yeah, yeah.
So many of these things are buried in a sub-menu under another menu and different headings. Please make it really easy to find, so I can direct people to that, and the rest of us can as well.
I'll, I'll be sure, I'm gonna send you all a link, I'm gonna make it a really easy URL, make a QR code, I'll make it, have little, little business cards printed up with the link and the QR code on it, have those, I'll just show you around town. Um, and then, uh, just some brief code enforcement data for the last month. Um, Farm Assist, uh, they've done those, parking haul 15, citizens complaint 26, abandoned vehicles 12, graffiti 32, uh, follow-up, different various cases, 8, notice of violation 10, uh, citizens assist 24, and officer veteran.
I have one question, I don't need to jump ahead of us, council, but is there a way code enforcement can do something about overly loud exhaust?
Code enforcement, no, I think that.
That's gonna be a police issue?
Yeah, it's a police issue, yeah. So no illegal violations.
Good, thank you, sir. Mr. Fisher? Okay. Fisher has nothing, and Chief Leth.
Sorry, I just made a call a little bit close. Um, the first thing I wanna do is I wanna invite, uh, all of you, um, the SWAT team that you authorize some of the, um, ARB money for, uh, putting two people on a regional team, City Gack, Law's Sheriff's Office, Grandview, I believe, Diddy Gap, and Eglis is working on putting somebody on the team. They'll have training down June, Sunnyside, on Tuesday, April 18th at 2:00 p.m. on Hill Road. They don't have an exact address yet, but, um, wanted to give you all the opportunities to come, see what your dollars are going towards, and watch them train on a house before it gets to them, so they'll be able to do some training. So I wanted to give you as much notice as I could, uh, April 18th at 2:00 p.m., and then, uh, as we get closer, I should be.
I gave my same questions about the noise, noisy cars.
Yes. Um, so the noisy cars, um, that is something that we can enforce. Uh, right now, our shifts are running about three people, we've been pretty busy, um, but, um, I'll make sure that it's, 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 it's out of.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because I was working the other night, I was out until 2:00 a.m., and I get home, it takes a little while to settle down to go work, and the window opened, and I tell you, the number of cars racing around Sunnyside at that time of day is absolutely insane.
The problem is most of those kids that are racing around like that don't stop when we turn the lights on.
Yeah.
That's, that's been our biggest issue. We, with the last person, we go back through the ramp, and about one night, take off us. Uh, we had one, um, just this last week that went up to Comma, probably tripled, it took away from one of the officers during the afternoon on Saturday. Um, we have three dates, uh, just recently where the Washington State Traffic Safety Commission allocated some money, we haven't gone out and ran licensees. Our officers have been averaging probably one DUI every Friday night and Saturday night for the month. Um, we have some upcoming distracted guiding emphasis for people on their cell phones that are paying attention to the rules. And that'll be, that'll be on the state board, the Traffic Safety Commission, so officers should come out on overtime, and there, we, where's the city area for traffic safety commission? Um, since the 13th of the year, the, uh, of the date, we handled 385 incidents, 82 traffic stops, 17 arrests, uh, criminal wrong traffic, 15 sticks, criminal traffic, 48 infractions, and one body count. Any questions?
Questions received.
Field interview, so they'll contact somebody, um, or we're contacting people all the time and like they're all walking around, but, uh, they found a significant amount, maybe the person that, uh, is known to murderize or something like that, that they're talking in, who it was, what area they were in, what they were wearing, bringing a backpack or something like that, so we could go back and look that up later, take a following detail.
One quick question. Noisy crimes. Um, even though I understand the issue, um, taking off, isn't there some way to capture the license plate? And I'm just asking if we have body cam or.
We have, we have this through our, we have this through our body cams. Um, we are integrated because of our, our block cameras, um, that's another, uh, fund from the ARB money, that, or funded project by, 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 and they're supposed to be getting this all over the next two weeks, and we have 40 cameras going. Problem is, um, unless you can identify who the driver is, we can get the license plate, unless you can see who the driver is in photos, that's a camera tape, so we're not gonna be charged anybody.
We kind of escaped the car.
It's a better, better mousetrap than that.
Well.
Because, because the entity is just changing, so.
That's what's changed over, I think, I think so, it's gotten a lot harder to do that.
I'd like to find a way to confiscate the car, hey, we got evidence it was involved in a crime, it's our burden. Further questions for the chief?
Can we do that?
It's it's a distraction, I think, that's true, right?
Sorry, go right to the nuclear. You want, if you're gonna put people's lives at risk, wanna stop you. All right, Acting Chief Holbrook.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and the council members, just a couple of statistics for the fire department. Since our last meeting, we did run one hundred seventy-three calls for service, uh, within the city in our neighborhood. About twelve fourteen call a day. Uh, seven people have called from more than a black this time of year, we tend to see. The significance of uh more than a year, so. For the why there, um, some of the events, they were construction fire, uh, one another brush and grass fire, uh, indeed automatic fire alarms. Forty-six E M. So for a year to date, that provides uh, gives us the one thousand and forty-nine phone calls for service. Fifty call entries, approximately five percent.
Thank you, sir. All right, so I do have one thing I would like to request, and excuse the absence for myself for next week for the workshop meeting. If there's no objection from council, I will be elsewhere. Actually, I'll be on my way back here, but I won't be quite here by the time the meeting starts. Mister Deputy Mayor, are you able to chair the meeting that night?
I am able to chair the meeting, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, sir, I very much appreciate that. All right, there being no further business to come before council, and without objection, this meeting is now adjourned at seven forty-one.